All right, so it's 5:31 on June the, what are we, 23rd, right?
Yeah, all day.
All day, right Joe? And opening the select board meeting at 5:31, welcome everyone. The first order of business would, I would accept a motion to go into executive session with the town tax collector and his counsel to discuss a property sale, pending tax property sale.
Don't move.
Motion by Sharon is seconded by Joe DiNardo for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we'll be entering executive session this time. If there's anyone on the call that doesn't need to be in executive session with us, we'll be back in, you know, 30 minutes or less.
All right, so it's Josh Howard, Joe, Sharon, Gary, John Paul, Mary, and Jim.
And yourself.
And myself, yep.
Yep.
Is Howard on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay, hi Howard.
Hi.
Okay, so here we are, Bill, everyone else is gone.
Everyone else is.
And so we're out of executive session at 6:00 PM. Is there any action to be taken by my colleagues?
Nope.
No.
This time.
No.
All right, great.
Byron, is Sharon on?
Yep.
Oh, hi Sharon.
Hi Sharon.
I didn't hear Sharon.
I'm here.
Okay, okay.
Kind of here anyways.
Physically, that is Sharon.
I, I'm here with three bleeds, three bleeds on the brain in a, in a subdural hematoma, so.
Yeah, I know.
Tried to fly and it didn't work.
All right, I see Byron, how are you Byron?
Good, how are you guys tonight?
Good, Mike Rose here, Marty Wasserman, Barbara, and then I see two others with just dialing numbers, I don't know who they are, so.
Keith with the Herald.
Yeah, Keith, you're here, 274, right Keith?
Yep.
And then.
Josh?
Yep.
I'll be back in a minute, I gotta go get another cup of coffee.
All right Joe. Okay.
Josh?
Yes.
Same traffic.
Okay. Well, we'll get started here in a minute. Is there anyone else on the call? Anyone else on the call that I didn't acknowledge yet? You'd tell us who you are so we can get you in the minutes.
Josh, I'm here, it's Carrie.
Hey Carrie, who else is here?
Josh, it's Lydia.
Hey Lydia, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Are you gonna be working our August primary Lydia?
I would like to, yes, ah, well, let's, I have to think about it.
All right.
Probably yes, I'm sure we will be well distanced and well masked, I'll be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you're part of the, you're part of the regular crew now, we gotta have you.
We, we live by the rules and that'll work out just handy, thank you.
All right, so let's get right to it, it's 6:02, and good evening everyone, thanks for joining us for the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting of June 23rd, 2020 via Zoom conference call. We're gonna switch things up a little bit tonight per, by making exception here and adjusting our schedules due to one of our colleagues here. We're gonna go to new business and old business first, and then we're gonna take department head reports, so we're just gonna reverse the agenda if none of the decks. And we would start with new business. So, most specifically, I'd like to go to letter G under new business, board to discuss the opening of Northwood Pool. Mike Rose here, he did send out a updated 2.0 plan of, for safety and procedures at the pool if the board felt comfortable with moving forward. Mike does have a desire to open tomorrow if we vote in the affirmative tonight to allow it to happen. I'd like Mike to speak and then hear from my colleagues and see if we can vote one way or the other. So, Mike, the floor is yours.
Thanks, um, well, thank you everybody, the pool is up and running. It's ready to go. We've spent some time on our guidelines, which I have shared with you. I updated them today and sent them all or shared them with you today. As far as our procedures, once again, we'd be looking at running about three sessions a day with a deep clean in between each session. The plan is to have somebody out front signing up people. So the plan is that at nine o'clock, the phone will be open and you can call or drive by the pool and register for one of the three sessions to attend, keeping it to 22 people. As you would, as you enter, your name will be down, your temperature will be taken in a list of simple guidelines, which are listed in the plan will be talked about with the people that are entering the pool. And then, we will have social distancing wherever possible in the pool area. We won't have any water fountains up and running, the bathrooms will be running. You need to bring your own chair. So I feel we're in pretty good shape to give it a go and, and see how it works. Especially after this past week and a half with the heat, I, you know, received lots of phone calls. But that's, that's kind of what, it's all written down, if you have questions, I would gladly address them or any concerns, but I'd like to start tomorrow.
Mike, the baby pool won't be open, am I correct?
If that's what you would like, then, right now, there's a rope across it. So it's, it's, the conditions are what you feel as a group are important. So yes.
I think it's pretty hard, it's pretty hard to social distance little ones. So, my recommendation is that we open the pool, but we keep the kiddie pool closed.
That's fine, if that's what you'd like, I have no problem doing that. That's very easy to do as far as coordinating it off. I mean, that's up to you.
Is that a, is that a motion Sharon?
Well, I, yeah, I, I would make the motion that we open the pool with Mike's guidelines, because I went up and spent about, close to an hour with Mike, and he explained everything, and I really think he's done a good job with it. I, I just, we had talked about keeping the kiddie pool closed, at that time, he agreed with me. I just don't, I think it's very hard to keep little ones to abide by rules when, you know, I mean, some of them are, you know, can't read, others, you know, they're, they're children. And, but I, my motion is to open the pool with the guidelines. People that don't, aren't willing to abide by the guidelines, it's up to Mike to make certain that, that if they don't, then they'll have to leave the pool. So my motion is to open the pool tomorrow with the guidelines and the kiddie pool closed.
Okay Sharon, thanks, there's a motion by Sharon, as stated, is there a second to Sharon's motion?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Mary for further discussion. John Paul, Joe, anything to add?
My only concern is, I guess, trying to make people abide by Mike's rules, Mike's, you know, what the guidelines are. I've had a couple of discussions with some other folks in town operations and their thoughts where they, if we made rules, they, they weren't going to enforce them. And is Mike's crew ready to enforce what he put down and, and willing to take the heat they're gonna get for it?
Yes, we've had, I had extensive discussions with my head guards as far as being proactive in discussion with people that are gonna be upset, people are gonna have questions. I plan to be there just about every waking second until it kind of is running a little smoothly, but they're gonna defer right to me, try to de-escalate any issues that parents or people might have regarding what our simple rules are. So yes, that has been talked about extensively with the two head guards, and it was talked about as a whole when we had a quick meeting a week ago with the kids and expressing that that's something they need to just be aware of, just be very polite, and then defer everyone to me if the person is not satisfied with the, the answer that they get.
Because the adults are gonna be more of a problem because they're gonna try to intimidate your guards, and they're gonna give them a hard time if they don't like some things. I, I know how some of this stuff has been going and, and, but I, I think you have a good plan and you put a lot of effort in it, so I appreciate that.
I mean, personally, if someone's gonna give us a hard time, then I'm gonna ask them to leave, and then I'm just gonna call the PD if there becomes an issue. I think just basically having some good de-escalating skills and working with people and helping them understand and being proactive is gonna go a long way. They know they wanna go swim, the rules aren't aggressively huge, you just have to spread out and what I've listed up, you know, as far as what needs to happen. So it's not like this huge change, they just have to be a little bit more cautious about what.
Mary, did you have a question?
Yeah, how does this line up with the governor's guidelines at this point?
So it looks like Mike is frozen on the screen, so he can't answer. Mike, can you, can you hear us now?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, did you hear Mary's question?
No, Mary, go ahead.
So I was wondering how your recommended reopening plan lines up with the governor's recommend?
As far as the plan, I've worked with Pittsburgh and with Rutland City in putting together this comprehensive plan. Kim Peters is on one of the committees for rec and reopening, and we have followed, like, he just came out with a new plan last week. We are following the 25 people plan is what we're sticking to. Does that make sense?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
I have one more kept question.
Yeah.
Mike, I, I don't know how you feel, but if a parent comes up and they have a little one and they wanna hold them in the bigger pool in the three foot section, I don't have a problem with that.
Sharon, what we could do, and just not to, to, because I believe the kiddie pool, but what a lot of times with the kiddie pool without groups, it's mothers with their infants and they sit on the side and they hold the infant in the water. If you wanted to allow that in the kiddie pool, because there's easily ways to distance that way rather than just having kids in the kiddie pool, we could potentially do that. But as long as moms are in the water bobbing with their kids, that happens all the time too. So whatever you feel comfortable with as a group is what I'm gonna go by. I can do, I can control however you want.
Well, if they're gonna have their child in the kiddie pool, I would insist that the parent be right there at the kiddie pool.
I would agree with you 100%. 100%.
I would feel more comfortable having the kiddie pool open because I think it's a little safer, with the understanding that the, no unaccompanied children, the moms have to be, the mom or dad has to be their guardian or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, I don't have a problem with that, Mary.
So is that motion now amended Sharon?
Yeah, it is amended. That, that, we will open the kiddie pool, but the parents have to be there with the child.
Okay, so, motion on the floor by Sharon amended, seconded by Mary amended, further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any further? Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so tomorrow, tomorrow the pool can open.
Josh?
Yep, who's that?
Wait, I'd just like to take, I'd just like to take a half a second to thank Mike Rowe for a bunch of work that he's been doing on the phone service, internet service up there at the Northwood. And as a result of his efforts and times, he has actually reduced my phone bill by 50% and, and has reduced the zone bill in addition by 50%. I'd like to thank Mike for, he, he did put in a lot of effort on that.
Yeah, you did a great job.
Nice, thanks Mike.
Ain't no problem, thanks to Bill, Bill's the one that told me to do it. It pays to stay on hold for two hours. Yeah.
All right, um, the one thing I did neglect was asking for questions from the floor, public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak who's not on the agenda tonight?
Hi, yes, please, my name is Bill Ellis.
Hi Bill.
I'm an attorney with the law firm McNeil, Eddy &amp; Sheehan up in Burlington, and we represent the Rutland Town School District. Let me preface this, what I was gonna say by saying I have not conducted any research in the town land records, but my client's concerned that I'm here to, why I'm here is what steps the town is going to take with respect to the closure of parks in the town, including those that I understand are owned by the school district, separate and apart from the town. The, the most recent directive from the state says, starting June 26th, 2020, outdoor sporting events may occur with up to 150 participants and spectators provided adequate social distancing can be maintained. And it says specifically that spectators have to have 100 square feet each, so 10 by 10 squares. My question is if the town is, whether or not the town's going to allow that to happen.
Okay Bill, I appreciate you being on the call, and I would look to our town health officer for his opinion and guidance in regards to this situation. The uniqueness is, obviously, one of the fields at Northwood is legally owned by the school district. And so, John Paul, any input on this? John Paul, can you hear us?
Yeah, not at this time.
Not at this time, no, no input in regards to Mr. Ellis's inquiry?
Right.
Okay. Bill, I guess my question, Mr. Ellis, in regards to you being here tonight, I mean, it's not something that we had planned on talking about, we didn't put it on the agenda. Have you had conversations with our town health officer?
I have not.
Okay. We also got a request, and this, I'll bring it up now because you're on the call. We also got a request to amend our decision in regards to the school-owned field at Northwood. It sounds like the school has given them their blessing for a softball league to take place there. The gentleman, Jason Pillen, he's the one who's been in charge, gosh, probably a decade. And he would like us to allow the use of that one field at Northwood, and it would be limited to 25 people to be within the governor's most current recommendation. And that would be two, basically two softball teams with no spectators and so on. From my understanding, the school is okay with it, and this league would need our blessing to use the school field at Northwood. What are my colleagues' feelings on this?
So I have a question Josh.
Yes.
Mr. Ellis, this is Mary Ashcroft, I'm on the select board. If the school, if we, if the school has given permission for the use of, of their field, are they also going to be responsible for the policing necessary to make sure everyone is abiding by the guidelines?
That's a good question.
Because that would be an expense I don't think we would want to bear.
That's a, that's a very good question, and I will, I will take that back to my client.
The other question you can look, the other question you can look at is whether your client has authority to make any rules or regulations within the confines of Northwood Park, which the Act 250 permit vests in the town. We're not talking about the field at the school, we're talking about fields that are part of Northwood Park.
My understanding, and that's why I prefaced my, my statement by saying I have not done any legal research on the land records, is that there is a separate, separately owned parcel out there where the, where the softball fields are. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what I understand.
Well hey, listen, you're working for a school board that despite the Department of Education requirements that masks be worn by all staff and everyone else in the school building during the day, it just voted not to wear masks at its own school board meeting, so good luck in dealing with them.
I'm not, I'm not retained by them to deal with that question.
Hey, I wasn't expecting to hear from you tonight either, so join the crowd.
So I, I moved to table this.
This is an open meeting, isn't it John Paul?
Absolutely.
You telling me how to get off the call?
No, no sir, no one, no one is indicating to get off the call, you're more than welcome to stay. Sharon Russell, another board member, has a question for you Bill Ellis.
No, I, I think we should table this and, and it's, because John Paul is the health officer, that Mr. Ellis and John Paul discover all the necessary things on it. Doesn't sound like either one of them have been totally informed by any of this. So that would be my motion to table it and let John Paul work with Mr. Ellis and then come back to us.
Yeah, I won't be work, I, I won't be working with Mr. Ellis because Kevin Brown has been brought into this matter since the school board went legal, so he's gonna have to go through Kevin.
Well, I, I wanted to clarify my earlier statement, I have not spoken with John Paul, but I have spoken with Kevin this afternoon, and he knows very, very little about it, so we're both in the dark, but I did talk with Kevin, I reached out to him this afternoon.
Okay, further comments from our board?
Was that motion to table seconded?
Oh, yeah, is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
Seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so at this time, we'll instruct Kevin to work with Mr. Ellis over the next couple of weeks. We'll get our thoughts and position to Kevin so he's up to speed. And does that sound like a good plan to you, Mr. Ellis?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay, any further comments on this?
Is there any other items tonight? I mean, I heard the pool discussion and that's gonna open tomorrow. Are there any other agenda items tonight that will deal with the restrictions that are being posed, imposed on parks or the school property that are gonna be discussed tonight?
I would expect so.
Then I'll just hang out and listen.
All right, so we, let's see, let's continue under new business. Let's go to letter F, board to discuss resuming meetings in person. I, once again, pose this question to my colleagues, I would like to see us for our next meeting have a in-person socially-distanced meeting, I think it's time that we get back together and get the meetings somewhat back to normal, whatever the new normal looks like. Once again, I would propose that we do them at the Center Rutland Fire Station, whether it be in the apparatus bay with the trucks pulled out or in the conference room if you feel that's large enough. I still think the select board room is too small if we did, if we did get a number of people in this one confined room, so I would like to see us move in that direction. Thoughts from my colleagues?
I don't have any objection if people wanna do that as long as they provide, as long as we provide call-in to the public and other members that don't wanna attend in person.
And, and I would also request that masks are required.
I don't know Josh, I kinda like this format, it saves me a lot of time. I could come in from work and attend the meeting and go back to work. But, whatever the rest of you wanna do.
All right, so.
Well Joe could still call in.
Right, we'll still.
Yeah, I could.
We'll continue, we'll continue to have in the, the call-in number for anyone who'd like to participate this way for one reason or another, so. So, okay, so it sounds like the majority are in agreement, we'll, we'll plan the meeting for the 7th of July at the Center Rutland Fire Station.
Okay, and is that gonna be with requirement of masks?
Correct, but you should put it in the form of a motion Mary, or Sharon.
I did.
Okay, so motion by, motion by Sharon to conduct our next meeting and, and on the 7th of July, starting at the Center Rutland Fire Station for 6:00 PM with a requirement that all participants and visitors wear a face mask. Was there a second to that?
I did.
Seconded by Joe, further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. All right?
Josh?
Yes.
Question, would it be appropriate for the select board, Board of Health, or whatever we are, to require that masks be worn at all, be required at all town venues? You know, whether you're at the town office, or the board meeting, or at the dump? A couple of, three weeks ago, I was at the dump, a number of folks up there do not wear masks. There were some small children running around without masks, they were putting cardboard here, the parents were oblivious to what was going on, and I talked to Larry a little bit and Bill a little bit. They're apprehensive about having to enforce the rules, but I, I'm just concerned that if we don't start doing the right stuff, this bug is gonna go on forever, and this is gonna be what we got for a long time. So I don't know if it's appropriate for us to just make that the policy in town to further notice, if you're gonna be in a town-owned property, wear a mask. You know, like, you know, like Byron, when it's just him and Walt at the town garage, they're, they're, that's not a open-to-the-public kind of place, they're there by themselves, but the place is open to the public, it's just driving me crazy to see what's going on.
Yeah, we have that authority.
Yeah, but, but, you know, if we, if we do that, we're gonna open a can of worms, for example, you know, we're not gonna require visitors at Northwood Pool to wear masks while they're there.
Is there a difference between a, a building, being in a building and being in an open space in your mind Joe?
Well, being at the, the transfer station just really bothers me because, you know, there's quite a few people in there, the social distancing, and you know, we got slammed pretty good in an email a couple of months ago about the responsible adults, and, and every time I go up there, it's about 50/50, some are, most people wear masks and they do, and then there's the others that just don't care. And there are folks up there that wanna get right in your face to talk to you, they're not wearing a mask, and you know, you have to put in your run from them. So, that invite, it's just, that environment up there really bothered me when I was there a couple of weeks ago, it, it just really did. And I, and I know Larry and Bill are doing the best they can, they're wearing face shields, they're wearing gloves, they're trying to do the proper thing, but I'm just concerned that, you know, it's, it's just, I think I'm a little bit like JP who thinks that if we don't get a handle on this, we're gonna deal with it forever and we, and we're a little bit more conservative, so.
I'll second it Joe.
I don't think there's a, no, well, there's not a motion on the floor yet, correct?
Okay.
We have to.
I'm just out there, I put that out there. You know, I just put that out there for you guys to discuss, and we can decide on a group if that's what we wanna do or not, I just, I don't know. Well, I, the policing of this stuff is gonna be a problem because I know our, our tenants at the transfer station are not gonna wanna tell somebody they gotta leave because they won't wear a mask, because you know they're gonna get grumpy about it and there's gonna be conflict. So, they're not gonna wanna do that, and, and I don't know if we can tell them they have to do that, so. And it's food for thought, it, it's just, sometimes you just gotta get a little strict in order to get people to fall in line.
Well, I'd, I'd personally be in favor of it for in, in building, if you're inside a building, town hall for example, or you're in, in a fire station for example, but, like you said, tough to police it at the transfer station, it's an outdoor facility.
Not all of it.
Well, it's still open air, but it might, I mean, we're splitting hairs here, and some experts say that wearing a mask outside is more harmful than, than good because you need the fresh air, so. I mean, it's a, to me, I wear a mask everywhere I go, and I've been going to Home Depot, other places, and you see less and less people unfortunately wearing masks. I mean, it's a, to me, I wear a mask everywhere I go, and I've been going to Home Depot, other places, and you see less and less people unfortunately wearing masks. But it's, it is a personal choice at this point, and you know, I don't know if someone's gonna throw it on to go to the dump or not, I mean, it's just how do you enforce it? Like you said, we're not gonna have the town cops sitting up there enforcing something like that.
Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, and, and if you leave this up-
We could always send the first constable.
The, the constable wants to be there every Wednesday night and Saturday morning?
No, no, I said we could always send the first constable.
Yeah, I think, I, I don't, I don't think he's in favor of that.
Right.
Well, so what do we wanna do here, folks? I mean, it's good, good healthy discussion.
I think we should have a mask requirement for municipal buildings.
That would include a town hall and the, and the firehouses?
Yes.
And the highway garage?
The highway garage is kinda different, but I, I, I uh, I, the guys up there are pretty conscientious, so.
And there's only two of them, three of them.
Right, right, but they paying attention from what I've seen.
Yes.
Okay, so, so where, where do we wanna take this? Someone wanna make a motion to that floor, and are we talking about the public and employees, or who are we talking about? Because I-
And anyone, anyone who enters the building.
So does that mean Bill and Carrie and Susan at town hall, or not?
If they, if Bill's in his office with no one else, yes, if someone comes in Bill's office, he's gotta put his mask on. Same would apply to the other offices.
And this is for what buildings, again?
All municipal buildings.
Is that a motion, JP?
Yes.
Second.
Motion by John Paul, seconded by Joe. Further discussion? I think there's a lot of confusion here still. What's a municipal building, what isn't, is the lifeguard shed?
What, which buil, which building are you confused about being a municipal building?
Is the transfer station a municipal building?
Absolutely, and if you go in the transfer station office, you have to-
But you're not inside a building.
If you go inside the office, you are.
Okay, I, okay. Any further discussion?
It's an open-
I think, I just think there's a lot of confusion around what is and what isn't, who's gonna police it and so on. Inside town hall makes tremendous amount of sense, inside a fire station makes a ton of sense. We're not gonna make you wear one at the pool, but you're in an open-air container to throw your trash out, you need to wear one?
When you're in that building when you're in there doing the recycling, that is not my, yes, the doors are open, but you're within a physically smaller space where you come in contact with people, it's a lot different than being at the pool or out in the ball field.
So I-
Uh Mary-
We haven't asked our, we haven't asked the people who work in the offices and in the buildings how they feel about this, so I think I would really like to hear from them before we do um vote on this tonight. So I would move we table.
Motion by Mary to table, is there a second? Well, we have a motion on the floor first, so it would have to be defeated, correct?
Well, we have, don't we have the people, uh Carrie, are you on the phone?
Yes, I'm here.
How do you feel about it?
Um, I was actually going to um kinda mention that tonight anyway about town hall. Um, I current practice right now is, you know, we are wearing masks um at some points when, like, we've been seeing some of the regular researchers come in, so at first we were really adamant about um us wearing the masks, um but since we've been seeing them over and over and over again, um the ones that we're familiar with, we don't wear masks while they're, they're with us, um because they are in there almost daily, um but the-
Are they wearing masks?
They are wearing masks, yes.
Alright.
And, and they're following the protocol, they're doing a really great job of um signing in, using Purell, um using gloves. Um, I know that recently there's been a question from several public um people, I guess you would say, um as to when we're thinking about opening town hall. Um, and I guess my my um question is the same, um but I do respect the numbers and what's happening in our state, so um JP, I, I'm wondering what it is looking like, um and what does that mean for town hall, um whether or not are we waiting till July 15th as well, or what, what's your opinion?
Yeah, we're waiting till July 15th, but um I don't wanna, I want, I mean, I didn't get an answer yet as to whether or not you would rather not wear masks when you're in a building.
Um, when it's just um the regular staff, we haven't been wearing masks, um with the three or four of us. Um, if we start allowing public coming in, I would like to wear masks uh um for a while.
Okay, well, then why don't, would, would you be comfortable if we left it to your discretion, having in mind the social distance rules when you're inside?
Correct, I would, I wouldn't mind that at all.
Okay. Same would be for Bill. Bill, would you be alright with that?
Yeah, that's fine, that's um when, whenever I've had someone from, you know, researcher come in that's if, if they ever need to, then I, I do have a mask available for when they come in.
Yeah, I've seen you put it on for folks. And I think that's a sign of respect to those people, too.
Uh Mary, did that satisfy your, your inquiry?
Well, that takes care of the town clerk's office and Bill's office, that doesn't cover the police department, that doesn't cover the Lister's office, that doesn't cover the fire department.
Okay. Uh, we could hear from Chief Dumas, Chief Clark, um I don't, Howard's not on still, um or we could ta, table the motion for two weeks and get feedback from department heads, uh as you had suggested.
Well, nobody uh seconded my motion, so it's probably dead by now.
Alright, so the current motion on the floor was to require uh visitors at ta, municipal buildings to wear face coverings. Which I support, I just don't think that we're defining them properly. That's one opinion. Further discussion on this?
Well, it's supposed to be visitors and staff, right? When necessary?
Well, but we modified that, yeah, staff, uh, you know, at their discretion to meet social distancing requirements.
Okay. So just, just for the record, just so I understand, we're talking the two fire stations, we're talking town hall? We're talking where else? Highway garage?
No, we thought, we said the highway garage only has three people, and most of the time they're working outdoors.
Well, it's the same rule in the highway, at the employee's discretion to meet the social distancing requirements.
Right, right.
Uh, that's what we've been doing in the highway garage. Um, I've-
Right.
I've distanced myself from the break room, um this you want one extra person out of there, um it is mandatory, and I've made it mandatory, and, and my guys know that, that if there are two guys in the truck, um which we have to have occasionally, uh masks are mandatory.
Yeah.
Good job, Brian.
I don't think that's changed governor's uh uh revotion requirements, I don't think that's changed at all yet.
It has not.
Well, you know, if uh, well, the highway garage has not been opened yet, I still have signs on the doors, you know, visitors must call, make an appointment, I usually meet them outside, um maybe later in the summer, that, I may change that, as long as, you know as long as visitors do wear a mask, uh I'm just playing that by ear, right now I'm just gonna do it as it is.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, letter E, board to discuss reopening town hall to the public. Um, I just heard you mentioned something, John, John Paul, what, what's the July 15th thing, what's that about?
Well, that's when the, they're gonna um reconsider uh the current restrictions in terms of, you know, making appointments and things like that.
Who's they?
The state.
So how, how can, how can a person walk into a bank now that's open, how can we, I mean, and town hall's still closed?
Well, that would be up to the board to decide. I think that our town offices are problematic for spontaneous visits, because they cannot be accommodated according to the governor's spacing requirements. And, and that's how we do it.
If you, if you look at the banks, most of the, well, the Heritage Credit Union, they have signs on the door, the one on North Main Street says that they allow no more than four persons in the building at a time. And that would be something you would have to do, a lot of the uh park stores are the same way. Uh, there's a certain number, so you open the door and there's three people in there, and you're gonna be number four, you're okay, but if you're number five, you gotta wait. And maybe at some point, we can say that there can't be more than the staff plus you know, you got somebody doing research, you, you can't have more than one or two people from the public, and it gets a little, you know, but that puts a lot of burden on the employees to do that.
So can we ask, Carrie?
I think Carrie handled that pretty well, um-
Well, I've heard nothing but compliments, people act, lawyers, like, oh, a title searcher told me they actually like being able to make an appointment because they're not, they know that they're gonna be able to get in and do their thing without waiting on the books. If other people are there, so. But Carrie, what, well, how is that going?
It's going really well, um le, uh, I agree with you JP, um the lawyers and the title searchers, they've given us um a lot of compliments, um and they've worked with us really well. They call for appointments, and right now we're, we're really flexible, and we're able to get many people in. Um, and a lot of them come in, go out, it's, it's been going really well. Um, so that's why I sort of asked um what it might look like, or when we might discuss how we're going to have public come in, um by myself.
What does that look, what does that look like to you?
Um, well, I was thinking a little bit about this, and um with the exception of tax time, I'm thinking it's gonna go okay, because if um say two or three people come in um at one point, I can totally see the other few people waiting in the lobby, or one outside, um and waiting their turn until the next until people come in and do their business and leave. Um I, I, I can see that working well, um and we're set up to do that. Um, but again, it would be a discussion around tax time, how that's gonna go, because that'll be a lot more fluctuation in and out of the building.
Is that something that what you just talked about now, is that something you would feel comfortable implementing on July 15th, assuming the governor lifts the restrictions?
I do feel comfortable with that, yes.
Okay.
So, so we couldn't move sooner than July 15th by doing something like the uh banks and park stores are doing, where they limit three to four people in the place at once?
No, no, we could, but I just question whether that can be maintained within the confines of the vault and the air, small area that they have to work with. But if the people are you know, as Carrie's saying, they're, they're being good about being patient, knowing they might have to wait to showing up, so that we can preserve that safety for our employees, right? I guess everybody would be good with it.
So is the board-
Could we do? Uh, could we, Carrie, what about something along the lines like you're doing with the researchers, where they call? Um, when the beginning this started, I would call you and tell you that I was coming over to sign papers or do whatever. If we did something similar with the public, somebody that needs to come in and do and I'm not sure what the public's doing in there, other than paying their taxes, there's other stuff I know you do for folks. Um, kinda do it on the same way that they call and see if there's a time when they could come in and it'd be convenient.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind that at all, um there's things like marriage licenses and birth certificates and death certificates that need um in-person, um the person actually has to be there to get that done. I know that um I've turned a couple people away over this time because they couldn't come in. But if we can start maybe by slowly letting the public make appointments, absolutely, I would be for it.
Would, would that work okay, JP?
Yeah, that would work fine.
I mean, to me, that, that way he can regulate, say, you know, I, somebody calls up, they wanna do a marriage license, and they're gonna be there at 11 o'clock, and Carrie can say, yep, that's a good time, and just make it work.
Yep, I like it.
And you know, and I, I think that's the way to go right now.
I think that's a great way to start.
So the proposal was, is the town hall is open by appointment?
Yeah, that seems to be the consensus.
Right. And with a mask.
Oh yeah, masks is gonna continue to be required.
Masks are required, that, that goes back to the previous motion.
Right, you're right, Joey, sorry.
Yep, yep. You know, and if, and if Carrie's okay with, you know, because it's gonna be her and Susan that are gonna be burdened with answering the phone, making the appointments, kinda keeping this going, if they can, they're okay with that along with their regular duties, I'm all for it.
I believe we can totally handle it.
Cool. Alright, so as-
Do we have to do? Do we have to make a motion to do that, Josh, or can we just, how do we do this?
We might as well, we, I mean, we've made motion after motion, so. But when, when is that gonna start, tomorrow?
Uh, it's up to the town clerk and treasurer when she's ready to go. She has the final say.
I'm ready to go.
Yeah. I did have a conversation with Susan.
So I would move that we open the town hall to the public by appointment and require face masks to be worn.
Motion by Mary, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Joe DiNardo. Carrie, that's during tomorrow?
Yes, that's correct.
People wanna come in for marriage license, birth certificate, all that, that's as long as they have an appointment.
And a mask.
Right.
Well, that's not just her office, that's the Lister's, that's the
Right.
um Bill's office and so on.
Yeah, the town hall would be open.
And then uh come July 15th, the idea would be to unlock the door and let people come in, right?
We don't know yet, that wasn't part of my motion, let's just take what's before us.
We're in discussion phase now, so that's why I'm asking.
Well, we won't know the answer to that till July 15th.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Board to finalize plans uh for viewing of fireworks on July 4th. Mike Rowe and Ed Dumas, what does that look like?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So, um I'm gonna plan to park them on the field that's to the right of the transfer station. It's a good view, it's wide open, we can mark it off. Um, also, I can park them um in the parking lot by uh the tennis courts, and then the grass by the tennis court, so we should be able to accommodate quite a few cars. We'll have lifeguards directing traffic as always, um and they're gonna stay in their car. Well, that's what we're hoping. Um, so I think we can get quite a few cars in there, uh to try to keep them off the road would be the goal. So, me working with uh with Ed and the police department, I think we'll be okay.
Okay.
The only guy who added, Josh, the board is that it'd be nice to have no parking signs on post road, cause allowing to park on one side, they'll park on both sides, it's gonna be a so not only a traffic hazard, they'd need to get the fire department in an hour, it'd be more difficult.
Okay, so I typically do that, so you want me to post like I normally do?
Yes, Mike, that'd be great.
Okay, we'll take care of that, that's not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Josh?
Yeah.
Um, Sharon, I'm gonna have to get off.
Alright Sharon.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, thank you.
Bye Sharon.
Mister Chairman?
What?
This is Bill Ellis again, sorry.
Okay Bill.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Why can't the school district parking lot be used?
I don't, I don't personally see a reason why the school parking lot couldn't be used.
I saw, I've read all your minutes since uh, Saint Patrick's Day and JP said he was gonna close it down in consultation with the fire department.
I, I don't recall that discussion Bill, I'm not saying it didn't happen, but uh, John, John Paul, do you wanna shed some light on that?
That was uh, something that was under consideration at the time because we were worried about vandalism at the school. Um, but I also don't think they, there's, it's a very good vantage point, but I don't think that's ever been pursued.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I don't think anyone-
I'm sorry, if there's a question about, if there's a lack of parking and you have parking and people at the school and whether they can see it up close or from away, I don't understand what the, why he shut that down.
I'm not, I didn't shut anything down, I don't know what you're talking about.
If you want me to quote from the minutes of the select board meeting, let me find the date, if you really want me to, John Paul, I'm not gonna do that right now. I'm not gonna, I don't wanna slow down this meeting, I'd like to get on with my life, but I, I just fail to understand why it was so important to shut down the school district parking lot.
Because there were kids playing there at night, total games of basketball. And they needed to, they were told they were not allowed to be on, nobody's allowed to be on school grounds after dark unless it's a school-sponsored activity. That's the action that precipitated my response.
So you were foreseeing that what has to happen on July fourth, okay, I got it.
So I don't, I don't think uh, uh, Bill Ellis, that anyone here is, uh, you know, speak up, my colleagues, if I'm wrong, but if someone wanted to sit in the school parking lot, they're more than welcome to sit in the school parking lot and watch fireworks shoot off. Uh, I don't think that it's a good spot to sit and watch fireworks, cause the trees have grown so high over the last twenty years, I don't think you can see them from the school any longer. But if that's where you chose to sat, I don't see why there's any problem with sitting there at the, at the circle of, at the school.
Well, well, that was one of the reasons we talked about closing the school parking lot is cause you simply can't see the fireworks anymore. It's not a matter of whether it's a good vantage point, you can't see them.
I'll get the minutes to Kevin Brown.
Yeah, okay, I uh, is there anyone here that opposes the school parking lot being used for fireworks? Or to watch the fireworks from the school parking lot?
Well, I don't know, I don't think we have that authority unless we're acting as the board of health.
I think we're, okay. Alright, uh, Bill Ellis, give the minutes to Kevin please, if you would.
I will Mister Chairman.
Alright, thanks. Alright, I have a contract here from um, North Star Fireworks. They say that we did not back in uh, January or so, sign the contract with them for this Fourth of July. They've given us the uh, pre, prepaid bonus discount of seven hundred dollars, so the total amount is seven thousand dollars. Would someone authorize me to sign this as chair?
I'm so moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I seconded it.
JP did.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, thank you for that. Um, let's see. Board to review municipal impact questionnaire for Harbor Freight Act two fifty permit. Where are we at with that Bill?
So that's the questionnaire we've had the last couple meetings, uh, we needed to answer those, a couple pages. Uh, the, it's in your packet, uh, number three, I just included the two pages. Uh, this is due back to Act two fifty by July first, so this is our last opportunity to uh, provide that input to them.
Well, I've done the one who has been saying, have you run this and the Act two fifty application by each of the departments listed, fire, police, um, water, yes, and so on. So I guess my question is the same, because frankly, you know, if we, let me give you an example. If we don't have a piece of equipment that the fire department would need to fight a fire at the proposed building, we should know about it so that we can make a comment so that any cost of later complying won't fall on the town, it will fall on the developer as they're building it. That's why I'm asking these things, and that's why I've made the request that the department heads be asked to take a quick look at the application and make sure that they were all okay with it.
Okay, did any uh, department heads look at this yet?
Ed Dumas, yeah, I did, uh, Mary, and I didn't see any issues. I don't suspect there'd be a lot of retail tests from that location. Uh, if there's an issue, I'm sure we can take it up with the ownership to maybe get their own uh, security, depends on what their policies are, to be honest with you. I haven't anticipated a lot of problems there.
Okay, thanks Ed.
You're welcome.
Alright, so we're, we are uh, we're good to go with this then. Any action to be taken Bill, or we just fill out the survey?
I just need to fill out the survey, uh, there's a couple questions there uh, that you need to sign. Um, there's twenty, on, on those two, on those two pages, there's a couple, there's a couple things for you to fill out and uh, and sign on, on the, both those pages.
Both sides of this, you're saying?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Alright, uh, so I'm just, not, not to, not to beat a dead horse here, but I'm looking at the calendar and we're not gonna meet again as a select board or board of health until after the Fourth of July. So do we as a select board need to meet tonight as the board of health to determine this parking thing at the school? Okay.
This uh, municipal impact questionnaire, Josh, they need that by the First of July, we're gonna have this done and into them by then.
It's gonna be into them, yes.
Okay, because we do not wanna hold this project up, they don't wanna be waiting on us. And um, you know, having filled out quite a few of these, answered these questions um, in the past, I think that, you know, so our department heads have all weighed in, let's make sure this gets done till that this project moves forward.
Yeah. Okay. Um, okay, did anyone come over and see the orders yet?
Not yet.
Not for tonight.
Approval of the select board minutes from the ninth, is there a motion to approve on those?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Um, this is Mary, I'll second, but I've got two corrections.
What page is Mary?
First page, down the bottom. Um, one B, where it said a resolution drafted by VLCT. Motion was made and seconded, the motion passed, that should be noted.
Okay.
Um, next page, page two, midway down. Um, Barbara Noyes pulling report, one C, Ms. Ashcroft asked Mr. Sweet to be in touch with Mr. Burke. That's from um, District Environmental Commission, number one, not the State Natural Resources Board.
Okay. Any additional um, corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
You'll have to, I'll abstain Josh.
So I'll vote in the affirmative, so we get three votes, aye. Okay. Are we prepared to talk about a tracking system for firework permits tonight? What are we doing Bill?
Uh, we are posting them on the town website. Uh, and all the ones that have been approved so far are already there. Uh, we posted that information on Facebook as well, to, to direct people to that site. Um, and received follow-up comments and clarifications, but uh, that's been, seems to be working, so we do have a central point where they go to, so as, as they get approved, uh, send me the information and I uh, posted online shortly after that.
Okay.
That's good, so people can sort of police their own neighborhoods, that's helpful, thank you.
Yes, so it's on our, on our website, under the fire department page is where we, we put them.
Yeah. The uh, a while back there, I had mentioned to you and Josh about maybe coming up with some kind of a stamp or something Chris could use so that the uh, permit can't be altified.
It is in his possession.
Have, have, has that moved forward?
He, he, Chris has it in his possession.
Okay, thank you, I, I just didn't hear back from you, so I didn't know if it had gone forward and I missed the last meeting.
Yep, all set.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. Let's see, under table business, board to discuss interactive map, board to discuss consultation. Alright, I don't see anything under table business that needs to be discussed tonight, so.
Well, we haven't talked, you haven't talked about Northwood Park and Dewey Field.
What, what do you want, okay. What would you like to talk to you about that?
Well, it was tabled to see what the, what developed in the last two weeks with an idea that the board would make some decision as to are we gonna allow, for example, uh, baseball according to the regulations or softball? That's definite, that's on the table.
Alright, so I apologize that I skipped over that, um. Where would we like to go with this folks? We have the opportunity to um, allow based on the governor's recommendation for some softball and baseball to be played at Northwood and Dewey. Uh, I think through social, my personal opinion since I'm speaking, um, would be to allow it and allow it to be done with social distancing, no more than twenty-five people and so on. Uh, and allow the children of our town to enjoy some, some normalcy of the summer, and I think it could be done safely, so I'd like to see us use the fields in that manner. Um, and still, you know, the basketball is obviously a very close contact sport and that's something that can remain, in my opinion, uh, shut down, but um, I know other towns in the area are doing some uh, some baseball clinics and so on for youth, I saw uh, Western Ellen's Facebook page the other day, they're doing some of this, so. Um, I don't think there's any harm in allowing it to, to uh, to happen and that would also open the opportunity for this softball league that's been in the town for so long to, to do their thing potentially, so. What's the opinion of my colleagues?
Are there, and the other towns that you looked at, are there any conditions on the use um, of the fields?
So uh, what I saw was um, not much, but the, the two things I'll mention Mary were, I saw somewhere that uh, parents were sitting in their vehicles while the children were at the clinic, you know, in the, in their air conditioning, sitting there and rather than all, you know, being together or, um, and then number two was um, there couldn't be uh, fans in the stands, in other words, you couldn't have a, a big crowd watching, you know, the game and cheering people on while the league's played, so. Those would be the two things that I saw other towns were doing, so.
Mister Chairman?
I just don't know.
Go ahead John Paul.
I just don't know how we uh, how we would inform, who's gonna supervise, for example, a softball league, who's gonna supervise whether or not they comply with participation use and spectator numbers, that kinda thing.
I think it would have to be in the written agreement with um, I think it'd have to be in the written contract, that their contract will be pulled or dissolved if it was violated. Um, but on the other hand, this, they did not come to us for the contract, they went to the school once again for that contract. Uh, and the school as far as they agreed to allow them to do it.
Right, that, that's something-
Bill Ellis.
Excuse me, we're, we're having a conversation in the rail right now. Um, but that's something that's gonna have to be worked out between the lawyers as to who has authority over the park within, uh, the fields within Northwood Park, but that's not the issue I'm addressing right now. The issue I'm addressing is, it, it, does the board wanna allow the use according to the governor's guidelines? And the only concern I have on that is, you know, you, you bring up a good point, you could put it in the contract, but I, I just simply don't see those rules being complied with in practice because as has been noted earlier, uh, you know, the town's about fifty-fifty split on the issue.
The other thing is, uh, Josh, you were mentioning about letting the kids use the park, that takes away any supervision by contract, because if you open the parks up to the public and they can go play, who's gonna be watching?
So when you refer to park Joe, are you talking about the, I mean, we're talking about the baseball field, correct?
Well, it, uh, we're discussing B, which is Northwood Park and Dewey Field, which is baseball and rent those uses, so. If we open those back up, are we talking, opening them up to just this league that there is some supervision over with a contract, or are we talking about opening these up to the general public for a dozen or two dozen kids that wanna go play softball or baseball? And who, and how does that work? Because to JP's point is, how do you supervise it? Um, it's, it's, it's a, it's a whole problem with all of this trying to open the faucet a little bit and let things start going is that you're putting a lot on people's personal recognizance to behave and do things according to the rules, and as I've keep mentioning for the last three months, the responsible adults do not play by the rules.
Yeah, well, I think it, you know, I guess it's, I guess it's a personal opinion of, you know, that, in my opinion, the Town Hall, the Northwood Park, Dewey Field, these are owned by the taxpayers and the residents of the town and, and I just, I lean on the side of giving people the autonomy to, to use what they pay for and I understand the virus, I wear a mask everywhere I go, believe me, and I think it's crazy, people walk into Walmart and Home Depot without a mask on. But at the end of the day, you know, people have a short summer and if they wanna take their kids, if I wanna take my kid, my daughters right now to Northwood Park and teach them how to ride a bike, am I in violation, am I not? I, so I think there's just so much confusion right now as to what's allowed, what's not. So, you know, I think we have to trust, I think we have to trust people to make the right decisions and then if we see that it's total chaos, we see a spike in cases, then we wind it back a little bit.
So Josh, I, I understand your perspective and I don't oppose reopening the park according to the guidelines that have been proposed, I don't agree with it, but I don't oppose.
Mary, any thoughts?
I'm now lost, what are the guidelines? We close the basketball courts because those are close contact. We allow playing on the ball field because it's not, and you can maintain a social distance, but there can't be spectators, people can't sit in the bleachers, they have to stay in the cars and maintain social distance that way. I don't know about disc, um, the disc golf course, I don't know about picnicking, um, I don't know about, what's the other thing that we do? Oh, just walking.
Well, there's a middle ground, I mean, you could open it up like we've opened it up for swimming, you could open it up for, um, softball, as Josh did, you know, requiring compliance with the regulations as to population, you could, we, we don't have to do everything all at once.
And we haven't, up to this point.
Right, 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 I just know that there's a big interest in softball, and the guy has been absolutely, uh, he, he swears that he will be the one enforcing the rules, this, I forget, Josh, what's that guy's name that was calling?
His, his name's Jason, and I, and I for one believe him John, because, you know, when years ago...
Yeah, I do too, I do too.
Example, we had a problem with, uh, a couple of guys up there drinking, he threw them out of the league, we had another guy who was peeing in the woods in a neighbor sign, he policed that, so I think he's, uh, he's very reactive to, uh, you know, our...
Josh, I, I, I'm up there every night when they're leaving, and he's got a really responsible group of folks that he plays with. So that's why I'm not opposed to that type of thing, I just don't know how we'd ever govern it, and I don't think we can frankly.
Mike Rowe, comment for you as rec director?
Uh, no, my only concern is what you've been saying as far as, you know, not policing it, but monitoring it, you know, I'd like to open up and do some clinics, but I don't want, um, game activity down there, because people are, like I believe, are not going to practice good social distancing, um, as much as I want them, and I don't mind doing clinics and open things up and, and getting small number of kids out there active, I think it's phenomenal, and I'd love to do that. I like to shy away from the, I guess, for lack of a better word, the game scenario from my standpoint. Softball, they're in a different part of the park, they're grown, that's up to them. When we're talking kids, and you have parents, you have grandparents, you're adding more layers to it that want to come watch, that are interested, so for me, I'm okay with it, um, but there have to be some, some very strict guidelines as far as if I'm just running clinics, it's not a, a free-for-all, you can, you know, find 30 people and go play a game, which I don't think there will be, but, um, you know, approval of using fields would be part of it as well. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Makes sense, so Mike, you, you might have a volunteer coach who, if we allow this, might say in three weeks from now, hey, I'm going to take kindergarten through third graders and have 20 of them and do a baseball clinic, fundamentals.
Exactly, that's what I envision now, I don't envision any game scenarios, because it's, unless, you know, I just don't. Right now, I would envision clinics, and offering kids to get out there and hit the ball, or, or soccer, or a sport that is approved, that can be used on the field. And so I would start to offer up clinics, just to get people out and enjoying the park, and not having it any kind of game scenario for a rec perspective, if that makes sense. Because I don't want it to get out of hand.
So Joe, did you, did you have a chance to, to hear what I had talked about earlier about this league?
Yes.
I would be interested in your thoughts on that.
I'm not so worried about the adults.
Yeah.
You know, and, and I know that from past performance, those folks said, my, my concern was is how we open it, and, and do we open it, I like Mike's suggestion of opening the park to the public in a, um, controlled environment where a coach or somebody is going to do some work with a group of individuals that can be mon, that, that's monitoring, that's abiding by the standards that we're going to do. What I don't think is going to work is just saying, okay, it's open and the public can use the park on their own, because that won't work, but any organized and controlled environment and controlled, uh, thing would be great. It's a terrific idea.
Mary, what, what do you think, Mary?
It sounds like so far what you're talking about is, there, there's some kind of supervision, whether it's a clinic and someone in charge of it, or a softball league and somebody in charge of that. I haven't heard about ordinary walkers, I haven't heard about disc golf, um, I have heard about basketball, so it sounds like Mike will just tape off the courts.
Well, we have the hopes removed.
Well, that would do it too, yeah.
The walkers, the walkers are already, the walkers are already allowed in, Mary, we already did that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I thought we, I thought we allowed the walkers.
Yeah, we did, that was the first thing we allowed was walking.
So, so that's, so we've addressed, we've addressed everything but group activities, right Mary?
Well, you have, but I still haven't heard how you're going to deal with the kids in the neighborhood who walk over to play baseball at night.
That's still prohibited.
Are we kicking them out?
Probably.
Mike Rowe, I mean, how often do you see a bunch of kids organize a pickup game and go up there and play? Not often, right?
They don't, if anything, if anything, they go up and do basketball, and that's shut down, so, and in that neighborhood, I don't even know if there are 20 kids in that neighborhood down by Dewey, um, let alone up by the park, I don't foresee a, a huge gathering for baseball. Now, if basketball were open, that's a completely different can of worms, that I could see tons of people.
We're not talking about basketball.
I know, I'm just saying in reference, for baseball, no, I don't see that.
So would you have a problem, would you have a problem if we reopen the park for specific activities? For example, organized softball where they, where their contract or their permission requires compliance with the governor's standards?
I have no problem with it whatsoever, as long as they follow the guidelines that are set forth, that everyone's comfortable with, go ahead, I'm okay with it.
I will, I, I will go ahead, thank you, I, I make a motion that we allow softball according to, organize softball with a supervisor according to the governor's recommendations.
Uh, JP?
Yes.
What about organized clinics, as Mike was talking about, would you include that? Where there's supervision of, say soccer or, um, baseball that was supervised by a coach?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
And I, and to Mary, and to, and to Mary's point earlier, if we want to get real specific, why don't we say, could we say, Mike, could they do adult supervised soccer golf with that, and meet the requirements?
Soccer?
Not, you know, that, disc golf, yeah.
Disc golf is, disc golf is like golf golf, I mean, there are like two or three people that play at a time, that's, that's perfect social distancing already.
So I would, I would include, I would include that in my motion Joe, I would include those three activities.
Yeah, as long as stuff is supervised, I, I'll second your motion, I think it's a good way to start.
Thanks.
The only thing before we make that motion, I just wanted, that, that gentleman who came to us wanting to run that softball tournament, um, I would not be in favor of that until later on in the summer or early fall, because from, in talking with people, he had a tremendous amount of teams that he was looking to bring in, so...
And that was, that was gonna, and I completely agree, I don't think anyone on here that wouldn't agree, and Mike's frozen again, but that was, they were looking between 300 and 500 people to be at that event, and I, we're just, we're close to having that type of, uh, of people, so.
So...
No, 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 it would have to be subject to the governor's recommendations.
Of, of course, and he's referring to the last meeting when the gentleman came to ask if he could have the charity event for the gentleman who died.
Yeah, that was, but wasn't that a memorial tournament?
Yes, but there was going to still be 300 to 500 people.
We haven't, we haven't foreclosed that, we just said, we, we got to wait until, I think your, your point was taken, we've got to wait till well into the summer or past before we can look at that. I mean, I don't know if they'll ever authorize those kind of gatherings again.
Right, that was just my concern, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, no, it wouldn't cover that Mike, it's just these, you know, like this softball league that wants to play, and these other folks that are responsible in that, when they use it.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, zero. Okay, great. Um, fantastic, let's see, um... That handled B, under Board to Discuss Reopening Northwood Park and Dewey Field for the outside rec. Nothing else under Table Business unless my colleagues feel differently. Alright, let's jump back up to Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant to the Select Board.
Okay, uh, not too much left, uh, so, for, uh, for the packet, all I have left, uh, is your, uh, the latest committee agenda items and meeting schedules. Um, that was number one, number two is the revised, uh, operating permit for CNC fireworks, uh, as reviewed and modified by Kevin Brown, uh, that is number two in your packet. Um, so that, I, I want to make sure everybody saw that, that has not been sent to them, as far as I know, I, I always send it to them, I don't know if Kevin did, uh, but that is for you. And then, uh, in the packet you got in the mail, uh, four and five are just some Act 250 project review sheets, uh, that were, that are there just for your information. And then, in the one I emailed out to everybody, uh, earlier today, uh, we got, uh, some correspondence from Green Lantern Solar regarding the Northwood Park Array, uh, some correspondence from, representative from Tops Market in regards to the plastic bag ban, he asked you to review, uh, and then the Highway Committee met, um, after I sent out the packet, so I included the minutes from that meeting for you.
Alright, a lot of good stuff there Bill, thank you, uh, the Green Lantern, does, did everyone see that they pulled out of the agreement with us?
Yep.
They pulled out of the agreement, they wanted us to consider whether there was any other land, um, and I would say, no.
Right, and we sort of felt like after we all met up there last week, we might look into doing our own thing, right? John Paul? Mary, right?
Well, it's, it's a possibility.
Right. Okay. Um, is there anything else Bill that you mentioned that we should talk about? The Tops thing, that's, that's state law, right? That's nothing we want to get involved with, I don't think.
Yeah.
And Tops is in the city, right?
Yeah.
They are, he, he didn't know that, but he, he said, you know, I'm sure, he said, I'm sure a lot of town residents shop there, so he wanted to make sure they give opportunity to, to have a part of that if, uh, if he wanted to, but, um, yeah, that was just a pass it along.
For the Act 250, two things, the review sheets, did you make sure that, um, Barbara and the Planning Commission have copies of that?
Yep, those, those just came in, so I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to send those along as well, but those are, um, yep, um, those are, they're going to be available for them on Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
Anything from, uh, Bill, from my colleagues?
Um, the letter that, to CNC fireworks, um, do we need to authorize Josh to sign it on behalf of the board? And if so, I will so move.
Motion by Mary, is there a second?
I'll second.
Anything by Joe DiNero? For discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Some passes? Alright. Signed.
Is there anything Josh on that Act 250 stuff that has to be signed by you? Or does Bill sign it, or do we just return it?
I think it's just, uh, I think they just copy us on it, we're, we're, uh, uh, party to the information, but I don't think we have to sign anything.
Yeah, there weren't, there were, this was, there was no, these are just, uh, informational at this point, there wasn't anything for us to have to discuss at the moment.
Okay.
Uh, talking about, um, uh, just brought, brought to mind here Joe before I forgot, uh, I did try to reach out to Bronson Spencer, never heard back.
Yeah, I've got to call into him too.
So, um, I don't know where we're at with that, maybe Byron wants to talk about that under his report some more, but I just thought of that because of Bullock's pro, uh, project up there on Grover. Alright Billy, anything else?
Not for me.
Alright, thanks for everything, let's go to Kerry Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
Hi Josh, um, I don't really, I don't really have that much, other than, um, the updated, uh, sheet that I sent, all the department has, um, as far as where we are at the end of the fiscal year, of course, we just have a few more days left, but that is a pretty good snapshot of what we have left for the budget. Um, if you haven't looked at the sheet yet, um, it's around $124,000 that we have in access, or excess, um, for the budget. So we're looking good, and, um, that's pretty much all I had, other than talking about opening up Town Hall, but we already did that.
Alright, so, uh, so this is some great news actually Kerry, best news, uh, so far tonight, right? I mean, this is incredible, um, $124,198 will be the, uh, uh, surplus, um, and that'll get, that'll get rolled into the, uh, Capital Improvements Fund, uh, job well done from all our department heads, and, uh, I'm sure the taxpayers, uh, very much appreciate that we were able to carry so much over, so job well done once again to Byron and Mike and Chris and Ed and so on, thank you guys. Comments from, uh, my colleagues to Kerry? Alright, we'll move on Kerry Clark, thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome, have a good night.
Uh, Barbara?
Yes, hi Josh, hi everyone.
Hi.
Um, just a couple of things, um, tonight, of the Pocket Park in Center Rutland. The Planning Commission on Thursday night's going to go back and review the site plans that have been done, um, for that proposed park. Um, some encouraging news from Otter Creek Engineering, um, they are willing and happy to assist the town with one more round of changes to design, if needed. Um, this could include, um, updating the title for Rutland Town, and modifications that are, uh, we come up with for trail or attraction locations, um, but not including any more surveying, or, uh, does not include a complete redesign. So we'll take that as...
That's great news, thank you.
Yeah, they have been very good to work with. Um, the only other thing is, since, um, you met last, we sent, um, a letter to ALCO, the Otter Creek, about the Otter Creek 3 project there in Cold River Road, um, and that letter was in response to, um, it was in response to a letter we got from them, um, talking about our town plan, and also it's, it was in response to an email we received from them about the 45-day notice and us waiting that. Um, haven't heard back on that letter, but last week, Thomas Malone was testifying, uh, before the PUC about a related matter with the Otter Creek projects, they missed a couple of deadlines for things that they needed to do, um, but he expanded on his oral testimony just to insinuate that the, the town is speaking of one voice and saying, um, the project should go forward. And he explicitly said the Select Board, um, was on board. Both the Planning Commission and the Select Board. So, in his words, he said, the both voted to support the project... So in his words, he said, the both voted to support the project. So I just want to bring that to your attention in case.
This is even after we sent the corrective letters?
This is after the last letter we sent, um, right after your last meeting. It was June twelfth.
Do we send it to him or did we send it to the PUC or both?
We sent it to Michael Malone, his brother, uh, but they're both, they're both ALCO Energy, um, and we sent it to the PUC.
Okay.
So I'll, correct me if I'm wrong, but all we did was state that we were not going to waive the forty-five day, uh, period, right?
Yeah.
And, and all this, all this back and forth, I mean, the forty-five days is going to be here and gone sooner than, sooner than later, right?
Right. Well, we also, we also are pretty specific that the Planning Commission does not speak for the Select Board of the town. That was part of that letter, June twelfth.
Okay.
So, so they're telling the PUC that one thing that I'm not sure you have actually decided to do.
I would like to, I would like to suggest we have Kevin Brown write a letter to the PUC, include the prior letter to Malone and say that the town has not voted to support this project. The forty-five days is already gone. They're trying to get us to waive the forty-five days retroactively for some reason, and they also want to deal with it as an amendment as opposed to a new permit, which under our solar regulations is required. But misrepresenting to the PUC, I think that's something that needs to be called to their attention.
Yeah, I think having Kevin do a letter is a good idea.
So I would make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Mary, uh, so yeah, get Kevin involved with a letter to the PUC. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Bill, you want to give Kevin on that tomorrow? And urgency is the key word on this.
Yeah, yeah. Tell him it's a priority issue because we don't know where we are with time deadlines and things like that.
Uh, Bill, I'll call him tomorrow. I'll take care of it.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, let, let the boss do it. That's what you get the big bucks for.
Yeah. Uh, Barb, what else?
Nothing for me.
Anything for the Planning Commission?
Thanks for bring, thanks for bringing that to our attention, Barbara.
Yeah, if anyone wants to read, uh, the testimony, the, uh, the, the official transcript is out if anyone wants that.
Thanks.
Some light reading.
Barb and Bill, were you?
Light reading.
Go ahead, Mary.
Barb and Bill, were we able to get ahold of the other, uh, members of that Pocket Park Committee so that they could attend the meeting or the phone conference? On Thursday?
I haven't gotten ahold of them yet. I haven't, I haven't been able to find their contact info, but I'm gonna, I, I have some other avenues. I'm gonna try that tomorrow, so, uh, hopefully.
Didn't I give you the sheet, didn't I give you the sheet with the names on it, the signup sheet? From our first park?
I have the maps, but I know you had that. I don't know if you left me a copy of it. Let me, I will, I will double check. I will, I'll, I'll find them.
Okay, thanks.
And, and Mary, we, we will probably spend a couple of meetings on this, so if they miss Thursday's meeting, uh, we'll take it up again.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that they're invited so they know they're still part of this, you know, because they were neighbors and so on. Thank you.
Um, letter D, Micro, what more could you add to tonight's meeting that we haven't already heard, sir?
Uh, two things, actually. One, uh, okay, one, what and how do you want me to charge for the pool at admission? I have some thoughts, but I, I want to, I want to know what, uh, you feel.
Uh, we want to know how you feel.
Well, personally, I feel that if you're a resident of Rutland Town with everything that's going on, you should be able to come and enjoy the pool at no charge with proof of residency. Um, I would then say that for any non-residents, that there is a three or four dollar charge, which is essentially half of what they were.
I'd put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by, uh, John Paul, seconded by Joe.
Yeah, uh, question, uh, and one, maybe one addition. I'm fine with no charge for the residents, but priority, if there's, if there is.
Yeah, Mike, you froze up and we, we got a motion on the floor to, uh, accept your.
Guys, can you hear me?
Mike, can you hear me? Continue on, Mary.
I'm sorry, I keep cutting out. I can't hear anything. Can you hear me?
Mary, continue on.
I keep cutting out.
Okay, so, um, no problem with not charging, but in the event that there are too many people in any given time slot, that priority will be given to town residents?
I can't hear.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good point, Mary.
I can't hear you, so I don't.
I can hear Mike.
Whatever you decide is fine. Um, I just can't hear anything that's going on.
Billy, is there a way to put him on, uh, mute?
Good time to nominate him for dog catcher.
All right.
I agree.
Motion's on the floor to, um, for this summer to waive the fee of entry to Northwood Park for, or Northwood Pool for the town residents to use the pool by appointment and the charge for out-of-town residents will be three dollars per person. Is that correct?
And there, and, and there will be preference, to Mary's point, there'll be preference given to town residents if space is limited.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second for discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. I think it's a very nice thing that, uh, is being done for town residents, so, great job. All right, um, Byron Hathaway, we'll go to you.
Yes, sir.
Kerry, aye?
I only have to report that, uh, by Thursday, we will have, uh, all our roadsides mowed and, uh, mowed back fairly well. Um, we not get much of anything for rain over the next few days. We probably won't be, uh, mowing roadsides again until, you know, well into August. But, uh, e- everything went well, the tractor's running well and we're real happy with it. Um, other than that, we have, uh, Highway Committee meeting and some things that were brought up there and I will turn that over to Mary.
I was gonna say, Byron, that, uh, Town Line Road and top of Killington Avenue there, they look, they look really nice. Nice job.
Thank you.
You look very comfortable in that tractor.
The air conditioner works, but, uh, the hotter it gets, the less it works.
Uh, I'd go to, uh, I'd go to Mary for the Highway Committee report. It sounds like there's some action items for us to take, right?
Uh, there's one, yeah, but I have a question first about mowing. Is the head on this new mower, um, uh, narrower than the old mower? Is that why there were a couple of sweeps done?
Yes.
Aha.
The old mower was, uh, sixty inches, uh, this one's fifty inches. It's a ten inch difference.
Yeah, is this going to increase our costs of mowing?
No, but because we're not sending, having to send the tractor to Clarendon, which is a much larger town, we have taken more time and have mowed back further. Typically, um, in June, when I had the tractor before Clarendon, I would only make one pass on the main roads and skip many of the subdivisions and then not do a more thorough mowing until July or late in July, actually.
Okay.
We spent, we have spent more time only because we're not pushed, we're not in a hurry, so we're, we're mowing things back. And hopefully that will help us to get a handle on some of our invasives.
Yes, good, okay. Um, the Highway Committee met on Friday, June nineteenth. Um, primary purpose was to review the proposed list of projects that Byron had. And if you look at the, sorry about the dog, uh, if you look at the minutes, and that would be item D in the, in the packet, um, they're, they are listed there. Um, Byron's going to rent a piece of equipment, uh, a backhoe that will allow him to do most of this work, um, in-house. And so total amount for all of the projects, um, that are listed in item number one will be about thirty thousand dollars. So, um, we're moving forward, but we're not putting this out for contract as we would in other years, so we're saving some money there. Your Highway Committee recommends to the full board that we move forward with all of the projects that, um, Byron has outlined there, and I'd make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mary, seconded by, uh, John Paul for discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
And I think the rest was, um, information only. I don't think there was any other motion we had to make. Um, I will note that the city has completed paving on Campbell Road, which is quite nice. And thank you, city, for doing that.
Hey, um, Byron, this drainage work on Countryside Drive, is this that, uh, between the two properties there that they called me last month and I went and saw and I called you about?
That's correct.
Okay, and that's getting, that's gonna get taken care of this summer?
Yes.
Great. They should be very happy.
Uh, Mary, did you want to bring up the Regosta project?
Um, we did have, um, Mr. and Mrs. Regosta, and we also had, um, Mr. Bullock call in, wondering where we were with this. They're very anxious to move forward on, um, the, you know, using the preliminary engineering plans that, uh, Bronson Spencer did for the town. There was even a suggestion that just, just go ahead and do it and don't pay them, but that's not what we do. Um, but they do want to, um, go ahead and divert the water from the Regosta cellar and from where they had been putting it in the drainage area, using Bronson's plans and, um, putting it, um, in, uh, downstream to Bullock's property with, um, a pipe within the town's right of way.
So Byron, you were, you were gonna watch that work being performed. Would you be all right with us going ahead with it?
Absolutely. I would, and I definitely will be there every day on this project. I assume it'll be a, a project, but I will definitely be there every day to oversee that.
Well, I, I, I move we, uh, proceed on the basis that you described, Mary.
Yeah, Bronson, um, I'll second that. Um, Byron does have to give him a permit to work within the town's right of way.
Right, I saw that.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else?
We should vote on that?
We, uh, we need to.
I'm sorry, I, was, did somebody make a motion on that?
Yep, made and seconded.
All right.
We're just waiting for you to use the gavel instead of the squeezy toy.
But whatever works for you, Josh.
No, hey, listen. Uh, all right, so motion was, um, made and seconded, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes.
That's all I had, Josh.
All right, Byron, appreciate it. How's the, how's the corn growing? We need a little rain, right?
I think it jumped another foot today. It's, it's finding some water somewhere and it's, it's growing. It's looking good.
Oh, good, all right.
We're still figuring out exactly how we're gonna open. We're working on that.
All right, great. I see, uh, Mike Rose back. Can you hear us, Mike? All right, you, yes, we did vote, sir, and we took your recommendation, uh, free for town residents and a three dollar fee for out-of-town residents. Uh, the, the motion included a priority to town residents for the reservation spots first, uh, and then out-of-towners, um, as, as you can squeeze them in, okay?
Excellent, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Josh, Josh, are you gonna tell them about the dog keeper position?
Oh, yes, and you were also, uh, appointed and, and voted in to be the dog keeper for the town.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I, I, my first duty is to collect all dog waste bags and jump them and dump them at JP's house, so thank you very much. We need a place to properly dispose and, you know, you know, dog waste right up your alley. Bring it up there.
Oh, somebody's got their A-game tonight.
Hey, you got your bulldozer.
He means your health officer.
Barry it.
Right.
All right, let's go to, uh, the one and only Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
How's it going?
Good, sir. How are you?
Good. Uh, not much to report tonight. We've had a couple, three meetings on our new truck, so that's going good so far. Doing all the basic stuff right now, so nothing really to report on that yet. Um, I would like to talk about the gutters at Center Alton Station for a minute. They were put on, I don't know, four years ago, five years ago. They don't work. They overflow and it's ruining the flowers that Marty and his wife are planting in our new planters. Um, so I had Eric Carrera come over and he looked at it and he figured out a way to fix it. And he's willing to donate all the materials and his time to do it. Um, but to fix it correctly, we have to cut across the driveway like we talked about a few years ago. So.
Aren't those also heated?
They are. There's a piece of heat tape going through them. But that's because the run is so long it goes across the building, like on the side of the building, not, you know, not up on the roof.
So are the eaves actually overflowing?
Right over the, like where the handicap parking spot is, where all three of those roofs come together, there's just so much water coming off. The gutter can't handle it and it just overflows the gutter and into the new planters. And we've got, you know, a couple of dollars invested in flowers and wood chips and.
Oh, yeah, no, no, they put a lot of effort into that plan, but I'm wondering, can't we get a dedicated downspout right into the ground from the conversion of the three roofs rather than cut the asphalt?
Well, we can, but without running a pipe underground, it's just gonna go on the driveway and freeze right where we walk in the door in the winter.
But isn't what, that what we have the planters for underneath? Isn't the, there a rock bed that's supposed to take that water?
I thought so.
Not that much. You look at the amount of roof, if you look at the square footage of roof that's above that, it's a very poor design of that building to handle that much w- water. Quarter of an inch over several hundred square feet. I, I think you're just gonna have to bite the bullet, JP.
Yep.
Well, we've been in the bullet several times on this thing. And the planters was a fix and the, you know, I, and Byron went up there and did some work.
The planters weren't for gutters. They were for protecting the building.
Yeah.
Right, those were to keep somebody from driving into the office or the meeting room, but this is a different issue. This is water coming off the roof.
I understand what it is. I've been over there several times looking at the things, on the various iterations of trying to fix various problems with the thing. And I think it started when we took out the green area, the grassy area that was supposed to be in front of the fire station and we put parking in. I, I think that's where all of this thing started. Um, have you talked with Byron? He was pretty good about coming up with a solution, one of, for one of the previous, um, problem areas.
I haven't yet. Um, I was going to if, uh, we decided to do anything with the parking lot. Um, if he's got any suggestions.
I think, I think, I think Joey makes a good point. I mean, I think we gotta get it fixed and if the only way to do it is to cut the blacktop, we gotta do it.
I, I think the way to look at this, and I'm not gonna speak for Byron, but he's planning on renting a small excavator. The town does own a saw to cut the pavement and maybe some coordination between Chris's department and Byron's department and we'll get it done.
Yep.
So, how's that work, but, does that work, Byron?
Byron's on mute.
Oh, okay.
But he's, he's coming off, it looks like.
Great button there. There we go. How's that, guys?
That's good.
My only question is, um, is the water not moving fast enough across the gutter and, or is it the downspout itself that's not large enough to take the water? Because we had, you know, we did install an eight-inch pipe there for that downspout to dump into.
Right, and I think it's both. It's not big enough and it's not moving fast enough. So my idea and Eric's idea is to hook back into the pipe that you have there, but just come down to the, come down the side of the building on the left side of that first planter and cut like at a forty-five. and cut like at a 45 towards the, the ditch, but hook back into the pipe that you have there. I, I think it's an eight inch already.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the only cost, since Eric's going to donate the material and his time and he said he would cut the driveway, he just needs somebody to dig the hole and put the piece of eight inch pipe in.
Okay, I'll go and take a look at it tomorrow and, and kind of figure out how I can get in there and, and open that up.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else, Chris?
Uh, nope, that's all I got.
Anything for the fire department? All right, chief, thank you.
Thanks.
From one chief to another, let's go to Ed Dumas, town police chief.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Hey.
So all I got tonight really is we've got, in the last two weeks, got 69 calls for service. Not a whole lot going on at this point in time, just business as usual. Unless you guys have heard something that I have not.
All right, is, have we had the speed carts been moving around?
Uh, yeah, Deputy Chief Wasser moved it to, uh, by Park Lane Post-Orbit Extension earlier this week.
Very good.
And then we'll move it to another location. Uh, we have some complaints thrown down. We're going to try to, you know, appease those people and put it in different spots. Between JP and, and Deputy Chief Wasser, I'm sure it'll get moved around quite a bit.
Very good. Anything for Chief Dumas from my colleagues? All right, chief.
The only thing I'd add is I'm asking everybody to work till 4th of July until the fireworks are over anyways.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay.
Uh, John Paul, anything from the town health officer? All right, nothing from our colleague John Paul. It doesn't sound like. Committee meeting updates. We went over, uh, highway and we touched on energy some. There was nothing else to report from energy, right, Mary? Or Joey?
Well, just the fact that we are looking at seeing, we were given some bad information, was actually cheaper to go underground. CB's got a top-notch person who was very familiar with all of the options that would be available at Northwood and she suggested that we look at a couple of roof mounted systems and use 100 KW, which would not require three phases and would still develop a substantial credit towards the town's utility bill. Um, so the committee's got a, anyway, the committee's going to get back together and since that meeting, we got the letter from Green Lantern withdrawing, which was no surprise. They seem to have lost interest in the project some time ago. Um, but we can look at doing this ourselves and, and she encouraged us to do so, saying that there are people in the county that specialize in, you know, putting up solar arrays and doing the design and that kind of stuff and roof mounted. So it, it's something to look at anyway, but as far as a ground mounted or grant or landfill cover mounted solar array, that's, that's a dead issue. It's not going to happen.
Okay, JP, do we want to schedule a meeting here sometime and start pursuing this or what are we going to do?
Yeah, I think Bill will put that on his agenda to get us together.
Yeah, just, any, whenever you're ready, let me know and I can, I'll set it up.
Yeah, well, the end of this week, beginning of next week works for me.
Mornings before 10.
Yep. Do you want to set a meeting now? I can warn it tomorrow.
What do you think, Joe?
Yeah, I, I'm thinking, you know, if we want to talk about this, 9 o'clock Friday morning, I don't know if everybody's available. We can see you come up and plan.
Mary, Mary, are you available one of days this week around that time?
I've got a conference call with probate court on, at 9:30 on Friday. I've got my usual.
Thursday, how about Thursday?
We can't do it Thursday.
9 o'clock incubator stuff, okay.
Well, we can look to next week.
We can do it at 8 o'clock on Friday.
I don't think Mary can do it Friday.
Next week is probably okay.
How's Tuesday? How's Monday look?
Uh, Monday is okay.
Joe, would that work for you?
Sure, yeah.
Bill, why don't you set it up for Monday at 9 o'clock?
Got it.
Or do we want to go 8, do we want to go 8:30?
Whatever's good for you people.
9 o'clock.
Are we going to do, are we going to do it by conference call or do you want to get together?
I, I mean, I don't see the need to get together. We can do it by conference call.
All right, that works for me.
8:30 or 9 AM?
9.
Okay.
I trust this will be properly warned in accordance with the public, uh, open meeting laws.
That's why we didn't do it tomorrow.
Yeah, I don't.
Very much, Miss Ascroft.
I don't know who said that, but we warn every one of our meetings.
Yes, we do.
As legally required.
I just want to make sure. I heard meetings like emergency meeting type timeline.
Is, is next?
It was energy, not emergency.
Yeah, it's an energy committee meeting and is, is six days from today. Is that considered a rush?
We're fine.
Yeah.
Don't, don't, don't pursue that, Josh, please, Josh.
Yeah, just ignore that comment.
Don't, don't pursue that.
Um, let's see.
I apologize.
Thank you.
All right, we've gone through town departments, new business, board to discuss the status of COVID-19. I think we've beaten that.
Beat that to death.
Death tonight, right? Um, B, C, D, E, F, G have all been covered. Uh, any other new business come before the board? Is there any old business come before the board? At this time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Joe, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mary for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, good night, everyone. Thanks for participating. See you.
Good night.
Live action on July 7.